My name is Mark Gaines and I have the privilege of serving as the Vice President of Administration for the next few years for our congregation. This is the North Shore Synagogue Beth El Town Hall, starting at 8:00. If you're supposed to be in a different livestream, it's time to leave, or you can stay with us, it's your call. Before our speakers begin, we have a short video to show you, created by the fabulous Abby Lasky of our Director of Communications. Through strong leadership, unparalleled commitment at all levels, clergy, staff, lay leadership, Beth El provided comfort and strength to this community continuously throughout this past year, and as you'll hear, is poised to continue to do so for many more years. Throughout this past year, I've been especially proud to be a member of Beth El and its community of caring, dedicated, and kind people. What could be better? Looking towards the future and continuing the momentum built during a pandemic, of all things, the future shines brightly at North Shore Synagogue Beth El. We can... North Suburban, yeah, Suburban Beth El, sorry. We can all be together slowly, perhaps, at first, but together even stronger. Join me in watching this video that showcases where we've been together but apart, and where we continue to be together again. It includes the song "O Se Shalom," performed by Chazan Tisser, who will be honored this weekend. A bit of introduction, a bit of instruction for you to really have the best viewing experience. Before we start the video, at the bottom right corner of the viewer is a gear. Click on the gear and click on 108OP, which will give you the best viewing experience. And now, the video.
Welcome, and thanks for joining. I almost said Shabbat Shalom, but I didn't. Tonight is an important night, as we share with you how we are set to go from strength to strength, how Beth El quickly pivoted during this challenging pandemic year to virtual platforms while still maintaining very real bonds as a community, and how we are aligning ourselves for continued success in the year ahead. Tonight, we celebrate our past, our present, and our future as we march from strength to strength. I first want to thank Abby Lasky for producing the amazing and inspiring membership video we just saw. It really does capture many reasons why we are so optimistic about our future. Tonight, we will hear from our new president, Stuart Hawke, who will share a brief year in review, along with financial update; from Rabbi Schwab, who will review his vision for our synagogue and share updates on reopening and high holiday plans; from Executive Director Jeff Baden, who will talk about membership; and from Dr. Jeff Copin, who as head of a medical task force, will share a message on behalf of that group. And then, we will open up the floor for your questions about anything we speak about tonight. At any time, please email your question to Jeff Baden. His address is J.B.A.D.E.N., jbaden@nssbethel.org, and one of us will answer it. And we may attempt to combine some questions that are related in order to make things more efficient. As we said a year ago at our first town hall, we are sincere in our commitments to be prepared and to prepare for excellence. We are committed to being transparent in our planning with you, which tonight demonstrates. We plan to stay in touch with you with emails and regular mailings, and we will summarize tonight's remarks in writing and soon share. And we are excited about our future in whatever form it takes. May we continue our path from strength to strength. I'm very excited to invite our new president, Stuart Hawke, to speak next.
Thank you Rabbi Friedman for those wonderful remarks. My name is Stuart Hawke, and I'm honored and humbled to have been elected to serve as the President of the Board of Directors for North Suburban Synagogue Beth El. My wife Barbara and I have been members of Beth El for over 25 years, and our family has been blessed with the extraordinary talents of our clergy, staff, and lay leaders. Rabbi Noah Weinberg of Blessed Memory is the founder of the popular website AISH. He says, "People often avoid making decisions out of fear of making a mistake," and he continues, "The failure to make decisions is one of life's biggest mistakes." These past 16 months have been very trying. Our clergy, staff, and lay leadership of Beth El have faced many difficult decisions, and I could not be prouder of the outcome of these decisions and the incredible support of our congregation and our community. Like many organizations, we faced early challenges that were simply unprecedented. We closed our building. We canceled all in-person worship services and events and suffered serious financial challenges. So, we quickly pivoted and began to deliver worship services, education, meetings, and classes virtually or through a hybrid model. Our clergy was there for every lifecycle event, and at our peak, almost 900 families joined us on the livestream for the High Holidays. We delivered more informal classes, serving more people this past year than ever before in person, and our congregation supported us with nearly 100% of our 1,000-plus families renewing their membership at Beth El. We were fortunate to have secured two forgivable PPP loans from the U.S. government that helped us maintain full payroll with no staff layoffs. I'm also happy to report that our endowment continues to grow and now is close to $10 million. From a financial standpoint, we will finish our current fiscal year, ending June 30, 2021, without a deficit. Like last year, we created a modified contingency budget again this year for our upcoming fiscal year, given the current uncertainties. And here is where we need your help. With your continued support, especially with membership dues, we're projecting a balanced budget for our next fiscal year. We are so fortunate that our congregation continued to respond with increased financial support through donations that not only helped fund Beth El, but also those in need. As you may have heard, our Hazak Committee was very busy reaching out to every congregant. They assisted as well and as needed with grocery shopping, medical appointments, and so much more throughout the pandemic. We showed that Beth El is more than just a building. We are truly blessed to have such a wonderful and caring congregation and community. While the couch may be a more comfortable place to fall asleep when I'm talking, I guarantee you'll feel more at home here in the Field Family Sanctuary. We have been and will continue to be thoughtful, proactive, and careful in safely reopening our building. So let me encourage you, when you are ready, come back to Beth El in person. Our weekly Kol Beth El newsletter that comes out every Thursday is filled with details on upcoming virtual and in-person events. And once again, if you have any questions, please send them right now to jeffbaden@nssbethel.org. That's J.B.A.D.E.N. at nssbethel.org. Operators are standing by, so pick up your device and email us right now. And on a serious note, it's now my honor to introduce Rabbi Schwab. Thank you.
Shir LaNai, shir hadash. As the timeless words of the Book of Psalms proclaims, "Let us sing a new song to God." While the pandemic is not over and appropriate precautions still need to be taken, we are hopeful that now is the time to begin singing a new song and plan for a year ahead that thankfully will look very different from the year that is behind us. I am indeed grateful that over the past 15 months, there were so many of you that helped Beth El respond to the challenges of the pandemic with great love, with vigor, and with compassion, so we're able to serve the community in so many meaningful ways. As we did during our event honoring our COVID heroes, I want to applaud our incredible staff, teachers, lay leaders, volunteers, participants, and donors, who helped us thrive in ways we could never have imagined. And now it is time to take the vision that we laid out before the pandemic and infuse it with the new possibilities that have presented themselves during the pandemic to move forward into the future with even greater wisdom and strength. We all want our Beth El community to be vibrant, warm, and welcoming. We want Beth El to be a place of engaging tefillah, meaningful learning, compassionate community, and joyous Jewish life. Therefore, staff and lay leadership alike are poised to continue to help our community advance that vision even further in this new developing post-pandemic reality. Our vision for the coming months is to celebrate the new possibilities of gathering in person while continuing to do so in the safest way possible. The situation can always change, and the medical task force will monitor developments as they unfold, as they always have, and they can adjust any plans appropriately. However, we are thrilled that the vaccination rate in our area is so high and that vaccines are now being offered to children ages 12 and above, with the prospects of vaccine for younger children on the horizon. The infection rate is low and the cases in the U.S. continue to drop. Therefore, we are advancing along a path toward a wider reopening. We have had in-person Shabbat services at Beth El since August, starting with small numbers, but now we're up to allowing 200 people in person. Safety protocols are still in place, and the Field Family Sanctuary is open like on the High Holidays for maximum air circulation. Therefore, we continue to believe it is incredibly safe and ask you to consider joining us here in the Field Family Sanctuary or for any of our programs. We now have more food and drink options for kiddush, which we hold outdoors, and which allows for social interaction without a mask for those who feel comfortable. It's really a joy. And after the B'nai Mitzvah season is over in mid-June, you will no longer need to sign up to attend Shabbat services in advance, just show up. We've been holding Monday and Thursday morning Minyon in person for months, and we're going to be adding Monday and Thursday evening Minyon as well, starting on June 3. Also in June, we'll be adding back Friday night services, every other Friday. We are so excited to bring in Shabbat in person again. Please make an effort to help make Minyon and assist us in moving towards, once again, providing in-person Minyon twice a day at Beth El. If you're a regular, we'd love to have you back. And if you are not a regular, we'd love for you to join us and give Minyon a try. It'll be great to be with you. Livestream and Zoom options for all services will of course remain in place for those who are not yet comfortable with coming in person. We are committed to meeting everyone's ritual needs as best we can. For the fall, we are planning for a full reopening. This means that our schools are planning to open in person. In fact, our Steinberg preschool was outdoor in person in the fall semester, and this semester successfully had indoor schooling. So we know what it takes to run a successful indoor program during the pandemic, and we are looking forward to a great year in our schools ahead. Details about the schools will be sent to parents directly as the first day of school gets closer. Also in the fall, of course, is something you may know of as the High Holidays. We're planning for in-person services for all those who would like to come. We are planning to hold services here in the Field Family Sanctuary, as well as at Highland Park High School, though we are still waiting for confirmation from the high school that their revised policies will allow them to rent space to us. But we are feeling optimistic. We have a backup plan if not. However, Chazan Billy Weisel has purchased his plane tickets, and we're planning for him to be with us, which of course is very exciting. Details of how the seating will work, questions about the masking policy at that point, and other finer issues will be answered over the summer and will be the subject of our next town hall on July 15. Mark your calendars. Children's services and activities remain a priority both during the High Holidays and during the course of the year. Depending on the spaces available to us, we'll be able to offer in-person options and of course provide digital and online content as we did last year during the holidays. With vaccines for children under 12 still an open question, we will again know more by the next town hall. Finally, I just want to highlight some of the news we have been sending you over this past month. We are very grateful to Chazan Tisser for his incredibly valuable contributions to our community, and we wish him well as he journeys to Beth El in Minneapolis. Please join us this Shabbat as we honor him from the Bima, and as well this Sunday, for a drive-through farewell from 10:30 a.m. until noon. We thank him for also making a beautiful recording of his music that was produced as both his gift to us and our gift to him. And we are excited to announce the arrival of Chazan Jacob Sandler, who is eager to begin with his work with our congregation. We hope that you will give him a warm Beth El welcome as he joins our community, starting on July 1. He'll be reading Haftarah on July 3 and Musaf on the 10th, so be sure to check it out. We also pay tribute to Dr. Alicia Geishman for her superb service to our community as the Director of Formal Education, and we wish her the very, very best on her retirement. We held a moving ceremony honoring her and her accomplishments that was well-attended. Being that Dr. Geishman retired, the Board of Education revived a strategic plan it created a few years ago that called for creating a single Head of Education, who had set a holistic vision for Beth El's education across the ages and departments, as well as support and oversee each director. We are thrilled to announce that our own Ali Drum has been hired for that position, which we titled "The Director of Congregational Learning." Ali has been a lead educator here for over 16 years, and most recently, our Director of Informal Education for the past 10. We are also thrilled that we were able to hire a talented and experienced religious school director from Beth Judea, named Anna Besser, to run our Cohen Religious School. Combined with our other current directors, Corey, Michelle, Rachel, and Sarah, we feel that we are certainly moving from strength to strength. Beth El is an amazing community, as you know. I am so proud of our extensive history. I'm amazed at how we responded to the pandemic, and I'm incredibly excited about the future. Thank you for being a part of making Beth El the incredible synagogue it is, and I now want to turn things over to our fabulous Executive Director, Jeff Baden.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be with you this evening, and I hope you're all well and taking good care of yourselves. Compared to last year, what I had to share, this time the news is much, much better. It looks like the pandemic is going to be behind us sooner than we all thought, which is great news. Personally, I'm so excited to have members and staff back in the building as we slowly open Beth El back up for business. As you've heard, we're currently allowing 200 in the building for services and other programs, and we've also been able to offer modified kiddishes outside on the patio for the last month, with a variety of individually wrapped foods for your safety, including egg salad, tuna salad, mini bagels, chips, and a variety of cookies and pastries. If you've not yet joined us for a service, we hope that you will plan to attend soon. We are still being extremely COVID-safe in everything we do, especially our food service, and our wonderful maintenance staff continues regular deep cleaning inside and out. Over the summer, we expect to be able to open up more and more, under the careful guidance of our medical task force, our local state and government guidelines, and the CDC. Speaking on behalf of the staff, I want to thank everyone for your support this past year. Unlike many other congregations, membership and philanthropy remained strong during the pandemic, which allowed us to retain our wonderful staff, all of them. We were able to keep every single staff member. I'm so proud of how hard our staff, as well as the board and an army of volunteers, worked to ensure a successful pivot to the virtual world. We sincerely hope that between the livestream services, parking lot programs, Shabbat meals, and hundreds of online programs and classes, that you found value in your membership. We do plan to open the building little by little, more and more, for programs and events over the next month or two. It is our goal to provide a High Holiday seat inside the building or at a satellite location for anyone who wishes to participate. If you are not ready to come in person, no worries. We also plan to provide the same high-quality, High Holiday livestream that you experienced last year. To help us with our planning, we've included a short, three-question survey in this week's Kol Beth El Weekly that hit your inboxes today at 3:00 p.m. We would be so grateful if you would be willing to take two minutes of your time after the program tonight and complete the survey. The survey asks whether you're interested in attending High Holidays inside, outdoors, or virtually, and if you have a preference as to the synagogue or a second site like the Highland Park High School. We will include the survey in next week's Kol Beth El as well, in case you can't find it, but please only complete it one time per family. We're not asking for names in the survey, so you'll not be held to your responses at this time. The survey is intended just to give us a snapshot in time about everyone's current comfort levels about participating in person. Once we have this data, we'll begin to prepare for the holidays. By July, we should be able to share our plans with you, and you will then be able to choose a location to attend services or join via the livestream. We will again password-protect the livestream so that only members in good standing are able to participate. And speaking of membership, renewal time is now upon us. During the first week of June, you will receive an email from our ShowCloud system that includes membership renewal information and your 21/22 invoice. There is a 3% increase this year, as we've done in past years, and that will be reflected on that invoice. We'll also be sending you a full membership packet and statement by snail mail, which should hit the mailboxes a few days after the email comes out. I do encourage everyone to try using our ShowCloud system this year. You'll be able to set everything up, including your own payment plan, and even spread your payments out over the entire year, if you would like, at no additional charge. Using ShowCloud, you will also be able to pay your Men's Club or Sisterhood dues, or any of our other worthy charities that Beth El supports, such as Merkaz USA or Masorti. And like last year, if you pay with credit card, we will not be charging a 3% processing fee. There is an option, however, to pay the processing fee, which would certainly help the synagogue's bottom line, but it's not required. If you have not used your ShowCloud account and need a little help, please feel free to contact Kathy Stinson in the office, and she'd be happy to guide you through it. It's worth getting to know ShowCloud because there's so much it can do. You can obviously pay your bill, but you can also update your profile by adding your Hebrew name, update your email or emergency contacts, but you can also do things like check the synagogue calendar for programs, events, or committee meetings, or even make a donation. Shortly, we will be adding an area to ShowCloud where you'll be able to add all of your interests and hobbies to your profile. For instance, if you like to play Mahjong, you simply check off the Mahjong box. This way, ShowCloud will let our membership department know what types of things you are interested in and what you are not. Hopefully, this will lead to less emails in the future, and when we do send emails, they'll be more targeted to what interests you. Finally, we will be launching a ShowCloud app for your phones or your iPads over the coming months. The app can be downloaded from either Apple or Google Store to your phone or your tablet and allow you to do all the things I described while you are on the go. And finally, speaking about membership, I wanted to share some exciting news with our preschool families who may be watching this livestream. Our Board of Directors recently approved synagogue membership to be included as part of preschool tuition. Therefore, we look forward to welcoming all of our preschool families into our Beth El community, starting this fall. In closing, I just want to remind everyone to take this short survey in the Kol Beth El Weekly and want to repeat how nice it has been to see so many of you in person at services these past few weeks. I look forward to seeing so many more of you in the weeks to come. Take care.
Eretz tov, everyone. On behalf of the Medical Advisory Task Force, I bring brachot of good health to all of you. As we're all aware, the amount of COVID that we're seeing in our community continues to drop. This is a very wonderful thing. We're approaching less than a 2% positivity rate of COVID testing in the state of Illinois. This is a tremendous improvement over where we were just a few short weeks ago. In addition, the number of hospitalizations of COVID patients in all of our hospitals continues to drop, and perhaps most importantly, the number of people who are dying of COVID throughout the United States continues to fall day after day. These are wonderful, wonderful advancements, as hopefully, and imyir tza haShem, we're getting close to the end of this pandemic. However, we're still in a pandemic. If you have not been vaccinated yet, and you would like to discuss questions you have with your community, you can send us a message, and we'll be happy to help you with that. If you have not been vaccinated yet, and you would like to discuss questions you have about vaccines, please contact any member of the Medical Task Force. Any one of us would be more than happy to talk to you about your questions regarding the vaccines. As Rabbi Schwab pointed out, the vaccine is available now to everyone down to the age of 12, and we certainly hope that everyone who can get the vaccine, who does not have a medical reason for not receiving the vaccine, that everyone in our community receive the vaccine. The vaccine is safe and is very, very effective. Yesterday, the Centers for Disease Control published a study that through April 30th of this year, 100 million Americans who have been fully vaccinated have been vaccinated safely. Out of the 100 million fully vaccinated people, just a little bit over 10,000 people have experienced breakthrough infection. Think about that. It's amazing. This is a true nest. It's a true miracle that our scientific know-how in the 21st century allows us to have a vaccine that's this effective and this safe. Please, if you have not been vaccinated yet, strongly consider it. And again, if you have questions about you or your children down to the age of 12, please do not hesitate to contact those of us on the Medical Task Force. As we continue to look at the programs that we have here at Beth El, as we look at our tefillot, our prayer services, we continue to follow the best guidance that comes to us from the various public health authorities. We've been quite proud of the decisions that we've made up until now to keep our community safe. As Rabbi Schwab mentioned, we now have up to 200 people attending Shabbat services. This is done safely. We're getting close to the time we're going to be able to consider to remove masks even inside, and we'll be announcing that when we can and the rationale behind it. But it's important that our community begin to realize that we're going to be able to get back to our normal lives and be able to live our lives in a normal way. At the same time, we fully realize the sensitivities of members of our congregation who might not be ready for that, and when the day comes that we do remove our masks indoors, there will be a way to deal with this for people who want to continue to be masked. I look forward to having that discussion. So as we move now into June into summer months, I hope everyone continues to stay safe, and I look forward to the day when we get to the end of this pandemic. Everyone, take good care.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you to all our presenters tonight. A lot of information, but really all good news. And now is the time of the program where we transition to answering questions, your questions, and so please feel free to reach out and email us, and we will do our best to answer it. The email address is Jeff Baden's email, J.Baden, B-A-D-E-N, at N S S Beth El dot O R G. Very excited, we have 139 screens on, so we know a lot of you are out there, and a lot of them have more than one person, so thank you for connecting with us in a very real way. So the first question is for Rabbi Schwab, and we heard about the protocols for Shabbat services, but what do Shabbat services feel like these days?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to enjoy answering this one. With so many more people now back in the Field Family Sanctuary, Sanctuary is filled with song and with joy and with community, and it feels completely safe and a little bit more like normal. It's really a special experience, and afterwards, to be able to actually converse with people and create community over kiddish, laugh, catch up, talk about serious issues, there are unfortunately plenty of them going around now, and to just connect with one another. It's really been a fantastic atmosphere, and I assure you, it's both safe and joyous and spiritual, and a pleasure to be together, to learn together, and to daven together.
The next question is for Stuart, and we know we're in the midst of a strategic plan. Where are we in the strategic plan process, and what are some of the key pillars?
Thank you, Rabbi, for the opportunity to speak again. Like both for-profit and nonprofit organizations, strategic planning is very important, and I'm proud and excited that Beth El has engaged with the process, both internally and with a consultant. And we've really, just as of Sunday, finished our initial draft, and we're going to begin to focus on three areas, which have a lot of subsegments, but the three areas would include leadership development, creating smaller communities within Beth El for engagement, and an enhanced worship experience through some wonderful ideas. So these are just a few things to hopefully whet your appetite, to know that we're continuing to innovate and keep with the conservative traditions, and looking forward all the time.
Another question, and it came up earlier, but I'll just clarify. I just filled out the survey today. Great, I want to give you a card. It was unclear whether Billy Weisel will return this year. What is the plan? So to clarify, he is coming, he is joining us, he's excited, we're excited. The real confirmation is we bought the plane ticket, so that's really official. We're excited to see Billy back. We missed him last year. Another person asked about some of the protocols about masks on the Beema and the Plexiglas. I myself was shocked when I could see the, you know, see the rows in front of me. The Plexiglas that's up here all the time is just taken down for tonight, just because it helps see the visibility, and this is really a made-for-TV production tonight, so it will be up again. I know you miss it for Shabbat. And masks are continuing to be worn in the synagogue, really for all activities. The exception is on Shabbat services, the rabbi in our box, or if someone is leading and there's no one else on the decanter's side, they're allowed to take off their mask because there's no one in the vicinity. So what you see now is not what it's like on Shabbat. Rabbi Schwab, this is for you. Is Ravinya Festival being considered as a venue for the High Holidays?
It's very flattering that you think I would attract a Ravinya crowd for the High Holidays. No, actually, we did consider Ravinya. We actually did it last year, too, when we were looking for an outdoor venue. You know, unfortunately, Ravinya was not willing to rent to anyone, so I heard that we and North Shore Congregation Israel both tried. So this year, we're going to stick with the Field Family Sanctuary, and it's looking good for us to be able to use Highland Park High School, and it'll be great to be together. We are going to look at outdoor options on our own property for some of our smaller services, or maybe overflow for those who are only comfortable outdoors, but again, that'll be more updated in July.
I was sort of hoping that Matiz Yahu could be our guest, Chazan, this year. Dr. Kopen, this is for you. Who else is on the Medical Task Force, and how can we get their contact information?
So our medical task force is made up of our nurse, Ronnie Weiss, Laurie Hochberg, who's a pediatrician, Ariel Levitan, who's an internist, and myself. I'm also an internal medicine specialist. Anyone who want to get in touch with any of us, simply contact the synagogue office, and the synagogue office would connect us.
Next question, do we still have to sign up for Shabbat services? When will that stop? It will stop very soon, June 19th, only a couple of weeks away after all the b'nai mitzvahs have, you know, completed their bar mitzvah season. So starting June 19th, if anyone is welcome to join, don't have to sign up for Shabbat services, and as Rabbi Schwab mentioned before, but I'll say it again, we're very excited to get back together in person for Friday night Shabbat services. Been a long time, been too long, so starting the second Friday in June, and the second and fourth of every month, please join us again. Jeff, here's a question for you. Can dues and contributions be paid by donor-advised fund and Shoal Cloud?
That is a very good question that I'm going to need to verify with Abe. We can definitely take donations and payments, membership payments, through donor-advised funds, but I'm not sure how we connect to Shoal Cloud. So that's something we'll have to get back to you. If the individual who asked the question would like to email me in the office at the J.Baden at N S S Beth El dot org, I'd be happy to direct that question directly to Abe, and we can get that information for you.
For Rabbi Schwab, about the High Holidays, do you anticipate reserved seating for those who choose indoors?
We don't know for sure exactly how we're going to do seating at this point. Part of it is based on the data points, which, again, we encourage all of you to take the survey about how many people we're going to accommodate, and part of it will also depend on the CDC's recommendations about physical spacing. But our guess is that yes, we're definitely going to, yes, is what we probably will have reserved seating to make sure that there's the appropriate spacing for all the different families that come in, and that everyone has a comfortable place that's safe for everyone
Dr. Kopen, get ready. These next two are for you. You can take them together. When can vaccinated people go without masks? And also, most of the science suggests that COVID cannot be transmitted through touch, while gloves on the Beema during services continue.
Thank you for those questions. Let's start with the second one. Yes, it's true, the concern about COVID being transmitted through touch, through contact, thankfully turned out not to be very much of an issue. We're thinking that once we get into the summer, people who are comfortable not wearing gloves on the Beema will be able to go without gloves. We'll be making an announcement regarding our decision on gloves once we get into summer services. Now regarding masks, when we're outdoors during kiddish, we should feel comfortable and safe going maskless. Having said that, for those individuals who still feel more comfortable and safer when they do wear a mask, please continue to wear a mask. It's important that each one of us, each member of our community, do that which makes him or her feel the most comfortable. But when we're outdoors, it's quite fine to go without masks. As I stated before, regarding masks inside the synagogue, we're going to continue to be masked for now, but I would like everyone to consider the possibility that in the not-too-distant future, we will provide the option for those who would prefer to go maskless and feel safe, to go maskless indoors. We're not quite there yet. We will be discussing this, and when that decision is made, we will share it with the
We have our final question unless I get a signal from our war room in a moment. What does the Sokol Hebrew High School look like these days? We're really excited about it, and it's been, we call this the Jewish Teen Project, and students in grades eight through 12, they learn together with students at Mariah, and this is really a joint venture, and we've been doing this for two years, and it's gone great, really behind the scenes, working with them is a pleasure, and it's good for our kids to meet some of their students and expand their social circles, it's good for their kids to get exposed to our clergy and vice versa. It's just a really nice feeling, and we get a terrific turnout, really week after week. It's a really strong, it's a really strong production. And this year, of course, we were virtual, and next year, we're planning on being virtual again. There are a lot of advantages to that and more convenient in some ways. We'll find some ways to make it more social for the students. So if you have a student who is in grades eighth through 12, you know, please email me to learn more. It's once a week on Tuesday nights for one hour, and it's really, it's really time well spent. This is a question, and one of the Jeffs may be best able to answer this. When will temperature checks stop? Of course, when you come in the building, we check your temperature and make sure you're feeling good. When will those cease?
Jeff Baden was happy to have me answer this. I'm hoping when we get into the summer services. This has been a recommendation from the Illinois Department of Public Health that we check temperatures before people come into a large gathering. As you all know, all of our hospitals have been doing that, we're continuing to do it. Our hope, though, is once we get into the summer services, that requirement will no longer be with us and we'll be able to cease taking temperatures. Having said that, if somebody is not feeling well, and that's whether you have COVID or something else, we're going to ask that you refrain from coming to Shoal until you're feeling better. But I'm hoping that we'll be able to do away with the mandatory temperature check in short order, and hopefully in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you to all of our speakers and presenters tonight, and thank you to Mala Groesberg and Joanne Blumberg, and a number of others who are working behind the scenes to really put this together and organize it in an important and clear way. Earlier today, as we heard before, everyone was sent a survey with three questions included in the 3:00 p.m. Thursday email. Please complete the survey as it significantly helps us plan. It's simply getting a snapshot of what your needs might be for in-person attendance. It's not a commitment, we're not tracking names. Later, we'll send a more detailed survey as we get closer, but now, we just need to know how many want to attend to inform our planning. Thank you all for joining us tonight and for all that you do to strengthen our community. Thank you, and la tov.